I'd like to call to order the Huntsville Independent School District Board of Trustees meeting. Ms. Lagone, we do have a quorum, but we do have two members absent. Mr. Hendrix is out of town at work and then Ms. Owens is out of town for the funeral of her brother, but we do have a quorum tonight. Dr. Shepherd, with certification and public notice of this meeting given in accordance with the provisions of Section 551.002 of the Texas Government Code?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We will stand for our opening prayer and pledges. Ms. Swatcher?
Father God, we come before you thanking you for our students, families, communities, staff, administration, and board. We ask that you fill us with your guidance, discernment, and endurance each and every day as we build champions in your name. When we need a reminder, help us to remember that our impact on the future may not be clearly seen on a day-to-day basis, but help us confidently know that we are providing the foundation for our students to grow, gain knowledge, and set a path for their life. Lord, we ask special blessings upon JT as he transitions off our board into a new role where he will impact a larger region of Texas in an amazing way. We ask that you help him see the new path you have for him. As a board, may we continue to lead this district in a positive way where we see our hard work and our growth in measurable ways. We do all this in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you, students, for that pledge. Board members, we have any comments?
Yes, Ms. Holland.
Ms. Swatcher?
I just wanted to thank our principals for the reports that they are providing us. I love reading them and seeing all the activities that you've completed and then the things that are forthcoming. They're very helpful to us just to get a snapshot of the great work that you're doing. So, they are read and thank you for taking the time to do this.
Ms. Swatcher? You're the board member. Dr. Shepherd, your briefing.
Yes, sir. I am proud to share that an exceptional number of our Huntsville High School varsity athletes are currently on the A honor roll, proving we are building champions in the classroom first. As of today, in varsity football, we have nineteen A honor roll students, varsity volleyball has ten, golf has five, and tennis has five. Thanks to these student athletes for taking care of academics at a high level while balancing the demands of varsity sports. Congratulations to Dr. Sharonda Johnson, Program Director and Principal of the Hornets Success Academy. Sharonda out there somewhere?
Yep.
She's gotta be out here somewhere. She's trying to duck. Sharonda was invited to be a featured speaker at TED XSHSU, Reframe 2025 at Sam Houston State University on Wednesday, October 1st. Her TED Talk was titled, "Words Have Weight: The Invisible Forces That Shape Our Lives." We congratulate her on a great talk and for representing Huntsville ISD and our community so well. Huntsville High School had a very successful homecoming week earlier this month. Huntsville High School Principal Robert Gilbert shared that "The excitement of the parade to the energy of the Friday night's winning football game, our Hornets showed their pride in every way." The week was capped off with a fantastic homecoming dance that, I don't know that I've ever heard a principal use the term fantastic dance in the same sentence, but capped off with a fantastic homecoming dance that gave students the chance to come together and celebrate in style. We went on to share that homecoming, he went on to share that homecoming is a powerful reminder of the traditions we carry forward and the bright future ahead. We thank all of the parents, staff, and community members who helped make Homecoming Week such a success. Now, the last part of my report is pretty shocking news and for me to say this in a public meeting like this without warning anybody ahead of time that I do have to let everybody know that tomorrow morning I expect to be arrested and thrown in jail. But it's for a good cause. As part of the fundraiser for Safe House. From ten to twelve tomorrow, I'm gonna be in jail. I think it's Cafe Texas. Is that right? That's a pretty good place to be in jail if you're gonna be in jail. And so I encourage you, if you would like for me to get out of jail, to call in and make donations for the Safe House fundraiser, listen in on Hello Huntsville and it'll be on Facebook somewhere too, Safe House Facebook page. It's all day long. Several community leaders will be jailed and then for us to get out, we have to collect bail and all that money goes to a really great cause. So, I'm happy to be a part of that and help a very worthy organization that helps so many people in our community. So, don't go tell everybody that I got arrested. That's really kinda, that's not true. And with that, that's my report and as always, sting of Hornets.
Well, Dr. Shepherd, I must say too, we didn't compare notes on this, I too am getting arrested and will be there before you. So, you could donate for me, get me out, and leave him in.
Or, you could not donate for him until I'm there with him and then we'll spend some quality time in jail.
Oh, I can see the paper. Thank you, Dr. Shepherd, for your briefing. Matthew, where is Matthew? There he is. Do you have a digital report?
We do. So, good evening, President Holland, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Shepherd. This month is Principals Month, so we thought it was a perfect opportunity to make and share a video profiling the work of our campus principals. Tonight, you'll hear about their roles as educational leaders on their campuses. This video might be a bit more meatier fare than a typical Happy Principals Month video, but I think and I hope that you like it. I learned a lot making this video and I think you may be able to gain some insight into the thinking, the work, the collaboration, and the processes that go into teaching all of our students, our kids. The video runs around five minutes and again, really hope you enjoy.
Educational leadership to me is a multi-faceted, go into classrooms and see really good teaching and then be able to take that really good teaching and replicate it into all parts of the building. It's being able to take teachers that come to me with various experience levels, various degrees, and being able to really put all of that together and build a really strong instructional program that's gonna support our students.
I have to build relationships first with people and then we get to practice.
Making sure that we're setting not only our students' own success, but also our teachers.
So, empowering them, placing them in a position where they can thrive and then giving them the tools and supports that they need to better serve our students.
Educational leadership is very much a team effort and being able to do things with while still dying.
So, we know that we have teacs that we have to cover, but we really have to know the teak. So, what do the teaks look like when we're proficient? What if we're, you know, still in need of support? What does that look like? But that's a conversation that the teachers have to be a part of because they're the ones assessing that. And so, we have some new teachers and then we'll have an experienced teacher, but they have to have that conversation together because if you don't have that conversation, what one teacher's idea might be totally different than those teachers' ideas. So, it's just getting on board and on the same page with everybody of what the expectations are because if we want to have the same experience in every classroom, then we need to have the same expectations of every classroom.
But we still give them the autonomy to plan their lessons the way they like or a way that fits their teaching style because your personality as a teacher needs to shine through so that your students get the authentic version of yourself.
Just like we as principals wanna be included in decisions that are made that impact us, our teachers wanna be included in the decisions that are made that impact them and in their classrooms.
On our campus, we support our teachers in a variety of ways. Probably the most impactful are instructional coaches because they have a depth of knowledge in their subject area and they are great teachers.
And these instructional coaches are in the foreign content areas and they meet every day with these teachers. And the teachers have a conference period, but they have a PLC period or collaborative team meeting.
Our Wednesday schedules are a little different. Instead of our teachers having the typical forty-five to fifty-minute conference time or meeting time, collaborative team time, we've worked our schedule around where we've extended that time, so now they have a hundred minutes, a hundred minutes to work with our instructional coaches on doing the right work.
Data is what really gets us into, was this effective or not? And then we can go make changes from there.
We analyze instruction every day and the teachers come back and they talk about, well, how could that be done better? So, this, the education and the accountability that we have at Mans Park is not by accident. It is very intentional and very well planned out.
But they don't have to do it alone. That's why we call it collaborative team time. It's a group of people that's working interdependently, right, to accomplish the common goal. So, the communication to parents and actually, y'all, the entire community is when we assign your kids this teacher, they didn't get the teacher, they got the team.
And it is always a challenge to provide quality professional development for the diverse needs of your staff. They're a lot like the students in our building. You have very high-capacity teachers and then you've got brand-new teachers that are just coming in and learning.
Now, that professional development can be in terms of things that we present, our coaches present, most importantly, what I love the most is when teachers present on the professional development. And then going outside and bringing in that professional development for teachers to learn from other experts in the field and make sure that we are committed to providing them with all the resources that they need to be successful, improve, high-quality professional development.
As an instructional leader on my campus, I feel in that department is to let my teachers learn how they learn and then be advocates for what they need in their classroom.
If they don't find value in the professional development that we are providing, then there's no purpose. Then they're not going to get out of it what you want them to get out of it.
We're all in this together. We are growing our kids together and there are a lot of gaps that we're trying to fill for various reasons and it can't just be one person doing that.
Asking questions and letting, having them the opportunity to ask questions of us as well, making sure that they know that they're not in this alone, that we're gonna walk side-by-side with them to ensure that they have everything they need and all the resources that they need to be successful as a teacher, to ensure that our students are learning at a very high level.
Make mistakes, ask questions, right, because that's what learning is with lifelong learners. Just because we're leading the instructional doesn't mean that we have stopped learning new things. So, just encouraging my teachers to continue on in the process and also respect the process, right? It's not a destination, it's a journey and we're gonna travel it together.
Very fitting for celebrating Principals Month. I wanna see the stars of the show. I think we have some principals out there. Where are you guys at? Can you stand up real quick? Don't mean to call you out and embarrass you, but our campus principals, there we are. (Applause). Thank you so much. We are about to enter into our time of recognitions down here on the floor, but before we do that, the first recognition that we're gonna be doing is for Mr. Langley and his retirement from the board. And I wanna give the board members an opportunity to say a few words if they wish. And then I have one that I need to read. So, whomever would like to go first? Ms. Swatcher, go ahead.
Thank you, JT, for your many years of service. Thank you for your leadership and thank you for sharing your wisdom with us. You helped me learn that I wanted to be involved in the district more. You helped me as I got elected. You continue to help me today and that leadership and just that friendship means a lot. So, I wish you the best on your journey. I'm excited that you're gonna impact other districts and other areas in East Texas and we'll continue to pray for you and we look forward to seeing all the things that you accomplish. So, thank you.
So?
Well, where do we start? Yeah. It's been a wild ride, hasn't it? So, JT got back on as I got on the board fifteen years ago and my kids still pick on me because we were in a conundrum around here back then. And I'm on the phone with JT and we're driving down the freeway and we get through talking about something we're trying to fix and I said, "Okay, bye, love you," and hung up the phone. And my kid said, "Mom, did you just tell JT you love him?" I said, "Yeah, because I talked to him more and I talked to your dad on the phone." So, it's been a long time and I'm gonna miss you. I'm still gonna call you and I'm probably still gonna tell you I love you.
JT, only, even though I've only been able to serve with you a year, I just wanna thank you for your faith in me. From the very beginning, you were a champion for me and I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to seeing what you do for the community as you move into your new role and I know that we'll still see you around. I appreciate the passion that you show, unwavering and uncommitted to anything. You are so passionate about this district that it's just, it encourages me and it inspires me and I appreciate it.
So, you had a few?
Well, I wanna make a comment or two. I'm gonna do it the way JT would do it. If you come to a lot of board meetings, it looks like this. Well... (Laughter). And then he starts talking, unscripted. So, we have a great board and, you know, we've been through changes through the eight years that I've been superintendent here and, you know, I've said this at board meetings before and I wanna say it to JT tonight that, you know, I will always be grateful for the board that hired me to come to Huntsville. It was a blessing for Donna and I and a great opportunity and I've loved every minute of that, even though some minutes have been harder than other minutes. It's been a great thing for me and I just wanna again say thank you. So, the board that hired me, there are only three members left on that board and Tracy and JT and Rissy, who's not able to be here tonight. So, we've been through some transition. We've always had a great mixture and a great board up here, but JT definitely is part of the reason that I found my way to Huntsville and I appreciate that very much from him. He is very passionate about Huntsville ISD and Huntsville Hornets and very loyal. I know that, you know, this is, this is a weird thing because we're not saying goodbye because we're gonna see JT always sporting the Hornet green and being a part of our community and a part of our district. So, thank you for your service to the board and the community and personally, thanks for what you've done for me.
Well, JT, I spoke with John Hendrix and Rissy. Rissy, obviously, I think you talked to her a little bit earlier and she goes, "I don't think you need to convey my words because I'll just convey them," but I know that she thinks a lot of you. But John sent this message along. "JT, it's been a pleasure serving with you. Your passion for the school district blended with your humor has made being a trustee a truly enjoyable experience. I thank you for your guidance and for showing me that we can do business, but we can also have fun while doing it. Don't be a stranger, you will be missed." For me, you know, I came on this board really with Trey's kind of prodding and a little bit of encouragement and not knowing much of you all personally when I got on the board and, but kind of sitting around and observing and learning and, you know, watching you and seeing how you handle yourself and it was an encouragement. And then I think, I didn't have as much encouragement as you did, Amanda, but along the way, you really kind of came along beside me and encouraged me and I'm the board member I am today because of that and I wanna say thank you. Your commitment to this district and this community is unparalleled and we should all strive to have that kind of passion and love for our kids. And you're gonna be missed and we're gonna laugh about you when you're not here and I'll try to do my imitation back there of you if I can. I don't know, it's gonna be a hard one, but we're gonna, we're gonna miss you here, but we know that we're gonna still see you around and be a part of your life. So, but thank you for what you've done for our district. We appreciate it. Now, we need to come down and do a... (Applause). I don't know, can I say no to you?
Probably not at this point, but, and don't start that three-minute clock. I, you know, it has been a long time and I've worked with a lot of board members. Last night, I couldn't get sleep. I knew I had to get up at five o'clock, but a lot of those names rolled through my head last night that I've served with. And they were all good board members, but this has been a great voting. I really worked together, what's best for this district, and that's been so important to me. Most of y'all out there probably don't realize, some of you have heard it, but my future as a Huntsville student wasn't very bright years ago. If it wasn't for one ag teacher that came to my house and got me out of bed, probably wouldn't have finished high school. If it wasn't for a baseball coach who is Morris Johnson, who we just put in the Hall of Fame, he had me believe until I was forty years old I was the best left-handed pitcher he ever had. I realized at forty, I was the only one. Those are the things that made a difference in my life. That's why I wound up deciding in early goings that I was gonna run and try to be on the school board. When you get to a point in your life, you wanna give back to your community and to me, this was the best part. You can serve on a lot of different things, but school board, it affects every kid in this district. Sixty-two-hundred, right, Sue? Sixty-two-hundred kids that go to class every day, that work. And when Dr. Shepherd moved here and we came up with this building champions, of course, I gave him a rough time because I told him, "It's not just about football, okay? Every town in Texas thinks if you're building champions, it's your football team, okay? Huntsville ISD is not about football, it's not about baseball, it's not about basketball. It's about building kids champions every day, academic-wise, CTE-wise, sports-wise. Our band, it's about building every day." And I finally got our superintendent on the right page and he's moving.
Hang on a second.
I think, I think at this point, Dr. Shepherd, I feel comfortable leaving you from this board.
Now, we're rewriting history. What is going on up there?
Recognize some of my family and folks that came and then I'm gonna shut up and we'll get on with the board. We'll let these folks leave after our recognition, but I've got an amazing family. My wife, my kids, my grandkids, my adopted daughter Jennifer Locke. Yeah, you thought I was gonna leave you out of this thing, Kelly. Would y'all stand up? I want these folks to see what a real champion I am. (Applause). The first time I've got one daughter that's not here and y'all can sit down. Do y'all, do y'all realize? I've been an educator for forty-something years and I've taught in prison and I've taught a lot of our people that failed in public school. That's why they wound up in prison. But I've taught thousands of those people and so many of them have been successful. But all these folks are working every day to build champions so our kids don't go and have to be educated that way. And, and we're trying to show them that they're champions. And I've got young kids in my family that y'all are making a difference on and principals and teachers are really making a difference. And this is why my family showed up today, amazing family. I don't know how I deserve these sons and daughters that I've got and grandkids and the friends I've got. Oh, Trey couldn't be here, by the way, tonight. He, our state representative is a keynote speaker in Napa Soda and he has to follow that trail when they call on him. But the first lady is with us. She can't, gentlemen, stand up for a minute so they see the first lady of District Quail. (Applause). This is what I'm excited about is we're building this and we've even gotten to the Capitol. We do have a hornet that's in the Capitol now and we've got doctors, we've got lawyers, we've got judges. Don't ever let somebody tell you that Huntsville ISD is not building champions. And I wanna thank y'all for listening to me for a few minutes and being here, the ones that was required to be here, thank you anyway. We thank you a lot and we gonna get on with this business and thank y'all for coming. (Applause). So, he didn't get to give another speech, but we do have a blank for JT for his service and a couple of years. JT, you'll come home?
Thank you. Thank you. Go. To your board of watch. Okay?
(Inaudible). He won't forget where he learned that.
Now, if you wrote for the board again, you have to give a question.
Well, I did tell this board, if they screw up this year, I might come back. That's not true. You have to... Well, if you come back, you're gonna have to get an old picture.
You need to give this to Jennifer. She might remember who this is.
Hey, the only advice I give to boards and I give it to them in the future, you see, I was way off at a distance. And if you get a distance picture, you can stay a long time. Look, where's Ken on the wall? Close he is. Next year or so, we'll say, "Y'all been abusing him because of wrinkles and everything."
Y'all get in here too. (Inaudible). All right, Alex, ready to go.
How about one more round of applause for Mr. Holland. President Holland, trustees, and Dr. Shepherd, we are excited to share some student and staff recognitions with you tonight. Our first recognition will be for Educator of the Month. Would Miss Jody Humphrey please come forward? (Applause). Miss Humphrey is a math teacher at Huntsville High School where they say their... where they say there are just not enough words to say about her and the positive impact that she has had and continues to have on their campus for the math department specifically. Miss Humphrey freely gives of her own personal time to work with fellow teachers to help ensure that Huntsville High School is growing every day. She has also gone above and beyond to work through all of the Algebra I resources to update them to the necessary rigor of the standard. Miss Humphrey is committed to ensuring that Huntsville High School students are being educated at or above the rigor of the teeps. It was very clear on the day that we went to her classroom to let her know that she'd been selected for this award, that her students loves her and she loves them. You could feel it as her students cheered with excitement for her as we announced her award. There was clapping and hollering and hoo-hawing, and they were so excited for you. Thank you so much for all that you do, building champions at Huntsville High School. We appreciate you and are proud to recognize you as Huntsville ISD's Educator of the Month. Congratulations.
Honestly, when she came into the room, I said, well, one of y'all won something. Just as to that. I just wanna say thank you, however this is possible. I just do what I love to do. So, being a word for it is a great opportunity because, like I said, I just do what I like to do. And I'm thankful that it got all of my family here at the same place at the same time. I have almost the whole row back there. So, again, I'm greatly appreciative and no words. Thank you.
Next is our Employee of the Month, Miss Brittany Johnson. Would you please come forward? Many of you may recognize Brittany, as she's a homegrown Hornet, proud class of Huntsville High School, 2011. Miss Johnson is now an Administrative Assistant to the Assistant Principals at Huntsville High School. Miss Johnson is a true asset to the Hornet family. She consistently goes out of her way to greet students, to talk to them, and to help ensure that they have everything that they need to be successful. She is a strong supporter of Huntsville High School students, both in and out of the classroom, as she is always somewhere helping support our Hornets at the many different events that they are involved in. Miss Johnson comes, yeah, that's true, isn't it? Miss Johnson comes to campus every single day with this beautiful smile on her face, a positive attitude, and she is always ready to help build champions. Thank you for everything that you do to help build champions at Huntsville High School. We are so proud to recognize you as Huntsville ISD's Employee of the Month.
Thank you. I just wanna thank my campus administrators and my Hornet family. It's truly an honor to serve the kids over there. They make it worthwhile. Give headaches and gray hairs from time to time, but it's all worth it. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. And I have my son Grayson, my oldest, is hopefully on his way back with a win tonight. Fresh in football playing Dayton tonight. Thank y'all, baby.
Ladies, in your envelopes, we'd like to call attention that you have a gift card from Walker County Ace Hardware for fifty dollars to spend as you please. And Texas Roadhouse has given you a certificate for dinner for two. So, we hope that you enjoy. They are also very proud of the work that you do. Next, we'd like to recognize our student leaders who helped us with the pledges tonight. Ms. Clark, would you please come up here and help me with this? Okay kiddos, as we call your name, you're gonna come up and you're gonna tell us your name. Well, you know, we're not gonna know your name. You're gonna tell us your grade. And if there's anybody in this audience that you'd like to give a shout out to, okay? All right. So, our students who led our pledges are from Stewart Elementary. And we think that they did a fine job. What do y'all think? First up, Luke Lane.
I'm in fifth grade.
Fifth grade. Yay. Big man on campus.
All right, is there anybody here you'd like to give a shout out to?
Oh, I'm in my dad in the back.
Awesome.
Carissa Kent.
I'm in fifth grade, and I'd like to give a really big shout out to my mom. She's all the way in the back. Hi!
Chloe Scott.
I'm in fifth grade, and I would like to give a shout out to my mom and my sister right there.
Michaela Venezuela.
I'm in fourth grade.
Is there anybody in here that you want?
My dad is here today.
Genesis Flores Thurcia.
I'm in fourth grade, and I would like to give a shout out to my mom.
Miranda Vega.
I am in third grade.
Awesome. And could anybody wanna give a shout out, please?
To my parents.
And Braxton, Jeff, that's a little... Yeah, soccer. All right kiddos, hold your certificates up. Point them out, don't cover your face or your paper. It's all pretty for Mr. Legge. All right, and y'all can go sit back down. Thank you, Mr. Legge. Next, we have our HHS Jazz Band members to recognize. On Saturday morning, September the thirteenth, after a Friday night football game, Huntsville Hornet Marching Band Champions reported early to the band hall to travel to compete in the TMBA Region Jazz Auditions in Clining Forest High School. We'd like to congratulate all of the students who participated with a special congratulations to the following students who earned a chair in the area band and for being state qualifiers. Please come forward when I call your name. Landon Birmingham. Not here. He was first chair on drum kit. So, awesome. Khalil Farr. First chair guitar. I-6 Hammond Tray. A.J. Wheeler. A.J.'s first chair trombone. David Guerrero. Second chair alto sax, congratulations. And Alfred Oladeli.
He's at the JV football game.
He's at the JV football game. He was fourth chair trumpet. Congratulations to these area band members and state qualifiers. Did y'all perform on Monday? You did not? Okay. Well, congratulations for a fine job. And at this time, we'd like to do our attendance recognition. The campus with the highest student attendance for September 2025, and this is student attendance, with ninety-four point five percent goes to Mans Park Middle School. Come on down. This is a first for Principal Jackson, and we hope that the first of means... Good job. Go to your campus and show it off, and then we're gonna take it back from here.
Why just keep with it?
And make you earn it again. Yeah, yeah, you can get it again. We'll let you keep it.
All right, we will.
As long as you get that percentage of. All right, now the campus with the highest staff attendance for September with ninety-six point five percent. Campus with the highest staff attendance for September goes to Samuel Walker Houston Elementary. I'm pretty sure this is... That's right, you got staff now.
Yeah, I'll let you have that this month.
Congratulations. Now at this time, I'd like to introduce our Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Marcus Forney, who will come forward with a special presentation for our principals.
Good evening. This time, I'm gonna ask that all of our program directors and all of our principals please come to the front at this time. All of our principals will present. I'm gonna ask you please come down to the front at this time. Chop, chop. October is a very special month. It's a time to celebrate an extraordinary group of leaders, our school principals. These are the people who work tirelessly every day, often behind the scenes to ensure our students and staff have what they need to succeed. Principals are the very heartbeat of our schools. They lead the vision, they inspire with passion, they model resilience, integrity, leadership, and they do all, it all for students, our teachers, and the community. Here in Huntsville ISD, they are building champions not just academically, but also in character, in leadership, and in life. Because of them, our students are not only learning, but they're also growing into the leaders of tomorrow. So, it gives me great excitement and enthusiasm to be able to celebrate our principals on this evening and throughout, actually, actually, the entire month of October. So, let's take this opportunity this evening to thank them for their work and let's honor their dedication, their courage, their unwavering commitment. Because of our principals, we truly live out our mantra. We are Huntsville, one team, one vision. The few, the proud Huntsville Hornets. Special portfolios and the charm of the magnitude of complimentary. San Jose University, and we give that to each of our principals. Happy birthday, congratulations. And we'll be honoring them on next week as well at our Leadership Team meeting and throughout the month of October. I just wanna thank them for their service.
Okay, we will be taking about a five minute recess, I think, Mr. Langley's family would like to look at a picture. But if y'all don't wanna stay for the rest, you're a little above the leave or you can stay with us.
Thank you so much. We're coming back from our brief interim. The next board members, the next agenda item will be our consent agenda. We did receive, put that in our board book. We entertain a motion for consent. Oh, I'm sorry, is there any public comments here? I skipped it. No public comment, thank you. Need to keep straight after all the festivities. All right, consent agenda. Get more motion in a second. Any comment on consent? No comment, all those in favor of consent agenda raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, that passes unanimously. Going to move to item B, consider approval of the posted library materials list for campuses in compliance with Senate Bill thirteen, Mr. Forney.
And good evening, President Holland, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Shepherd. It's my honor to present information relative to Senate Bill thirteen which speaks to the library materials acquisition for this school year. But before I begin the presentation, I just want to acknowledge the folks who are helpful in helping me put all of this information together. We've been working throughout the course of the entire year it was before the school year started to put this information together as well as some of the processes and procedures that we're gonna be working with tonight. And that is Ms. Jennifer Smack, the ILS over at Stewart Elementary, and also Mr. Mary Semen, who is our deputy director for technology. And I thank them for their efforts. Don't leave. The Texas Library Law that was passed by eighty nine, Texas Legislature was introduced with new rules relative to library collections, parental access, and oversight. There were content restrictions that were placed on books for school libraries as well as those libraries that are in the classroom. These library materials cannot have profane or indecent materials. For collection development, all librarians must have library tools that ensure that there is no profane language, no sexually explicit windows, no indecent content. The librarians are responsible for checking QR codes, digital links to ensure that the material don't lead to prohibited sites. The updated library catalog after board review and public notice that is required. We're gonna be asking this evening that our board would approve the list for the book credits going to be coming up sponsored by Scholastic Books. As far as teachers are concerned, they are asked to ensure that classroom libraries comply with Senate Bill thirteen standards, be aware of materials shared digitally with students through our apps or online platforms. And in terms of our parents, the law was purpose for expanding the right to view for our parents to review catalogs and to restrict certain books for their students if needed that they choose to do that. In terms of parental access, parents have access to school, our school library catalog, and I'll stick to that. And also district uses a learning management system or an online portal. Our parents must also be able to record those, be able to have access to those in terms of library checkout. And our system that we currently have, our learning management system, is the full estimate system. In terms of book challenges, all challenges, our parents should, that must use the TDA provided form. That one is online under library services. These challenges may be filed by our parents, our partners of the district, students, district employees, our residents of the district. Those challenges are initially reviewed by myself, Deputy Superintendent, along with my ad hoc committee members who are with me on this evening. And then after that process, we go through a process to see if we're gonna present that information to the board for recommendation to either remove the book or to continue or allow that book to be posted in the library or in the classroom set. So we look at the catalog approval, which is one to be my request review on this evening. We're basically having to receive board approval every time we're going to purchase books that are gonna be in our school libraries or in our classroom libraries. And I believe, uh, Mr. Non sent you guys the list of those books, came up to about three thousand three hundred seventy five books. And so doing extra due diligence, I ran those books through at least four AI programs to make sure that they did not have any inappropriate content based on the titles of those books. Those included Chat GPT, Claude, Microsoft Pilot, and also Google Gemini, just to make sure that those titles were appropriate for our students. And so at this time, let's see if there are any questions.
Board members, any questions? Just one, obviously IT is on your ad hoc committee. Obviously, we have a lot of digital books and things of that nature, so IT being imperative to get that done correctly. And then using our AI capabilities to help be more efficient in reviewing these books. I'm glad y'all are using those capabilities, thank you.
Yes, sir. And one thing I will add if I may, President Holland, is that I'll be sharing in subsequent meetings, because I'm gonna have to come up here on a regular basis to get those approvals from the board. I just wanted to add to the fact that again, we went through a very expensive process to make sure everything is appropriate. But just know that since this law is new, it's going to be a work in progress as we go throughout the school district. And there are gonna be additional pieces that we'll be adding to that along throughout the school year.
And just to confirm, the over three thousand on the list, that was because it was the initial going through all of our catalog and then having that approved, going forward, we'll have it in smaller chunks, I would assume.
That is correct. And then in order for them to even have a book there, we have to, you know, they might buy the books and I purchased the books, but we still have to get that approval. If we're going to bring those to our school district in terms of the library or the classroom libraries.
Uh, just a personal question about using AI to help you. Do you find that easy to do, was it utilizing that technology? I know we're using AI for a lot of different things, but hearing that it's being used in this way is very encouraging.
Very helpful tool with the help of our brilliant executive director technology, various helpful tool that we utilize, be able to make sure we just get a pre-screen just to make sure that those books were appropriate.
When you used the four different, did you find any that did say yes, that they were fine and the others weren't or anything like that? So basically, is it?
Across the forty to use.
Okay.
Yes, that's why I'm getting multiple, just to make sure.
Thank you. Appreciate the diligence in doing that. Think that's. Yep. So board members, is an action item to approve the list that was sent out? We thank Mr. Forney for the information, but we do need to take action on the list. Mr. Langley motions to approve the list. Stout to approve, any further comment on the list? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same side, pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Forney, appreciate that. Okay. Okay, our next is considered board approval to appoint a representative and an alternate to the Houston Galveston area council. Nominations board. Ms. Stout's gonna nominate Rissy Owens. That's what happens in the night here.
She, she actually enjoys it and she's really good at it, so we're not playing a prank on her upfront.
So let's do a motion in a second, or we have a motion to appoint. Okay, we got a second, any discussion?
Yes, I don't know. We talked about appointing somebody that's not here, but Ms. Owens has been doing this for a while and she's at a point. If we replace her right now, that person wouldn't go to be on the executive committee down there, which governs some money that comes to this district. That's how important we have to look at these things sometimes, and that's why I would make that motion to help. Ms. Owens back.
Yes, sir. No, it's a great point. Ms. Owens does travel down there with other representatives from Huntsville, Walker County. They work collaboratively together. Like you said, it's money for the city, the county, and also that the district can take advantage of. So her, her service of the HDAC is very important. Okay, so we also will vote on her first. So this is to vote on Ms. Owens to be the representative for HDAC. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, opposed, no, that passes. What about an alternate to serve on HDAC?
I'm gonna make Ms. Stout, and she's been filling in on that, and she's counting two roles for our community, and I think that's important.
Yes, sir, so we have a motion for Ms. Stout, second by Ms. Switzer, any discussion? And I would echo you, Mr. Langley, Ms. Stout does serve in her role in with the safe house that is also collaborative and we appreciate you doing that. All those in favor of Ms. Stout being the alternate? Opposed and you voting for yourself? All right, thank you so much. All right, um, we do need to consider board approval, Resolution twenty six dash zero five, a nomination for the Walker County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Members, do we have a motion to nominate a member of the Walker County Appraisal District?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Bob Stout.
Okay, have a nomination for Bob Stout. And a second. And a second by Ms. Ferris, any discussion? Okay, there is none. All those in favor of Bob Stout being nominated for an election for the Walker County Appraisal District Board of Directors, raise your right hand. Standing on that one? Okay, it does pass. All right. Okay, the next section are reports, most of them are written only. We do have our next, and by the way, as Ms. Switzer said earlier, thank you especially campus administrators and staff for giving us your written reports, especially all the pictures and all the things that you get to let us know what's happening on your campus. It's very valuable to us. We do have our next item F, our tax delinquent report from Purdue Brandon, and we have Ms. Leslie Scotty do the presentation for us. I hope that I, I think I got it right the first, last time.
You did brilliantly.
You're right. If y'all saw how the scope of the line was on.
Way too many pronunciations in a row, makes no sense at all. Well, good evening, Dr. Shepherd, President Holland, Board of Trustees. My name's Leslie Scotty, I'm a partner with the Purdue Brandon Law Firm, we're your delinquent tax collection firm. And I have before you tonight a delinquent tax collection report. Before I get ahead of myself, I have a guest with me, Jonathan Heedner, some of you may know him. He is an appraisal analyst with our audit and appeal division. We audit appeal services for, for school districts to help with their valuations. And he is a Huntsville resident, if you didn't know. So as we go through the report, these are delinquent taxes only. The appraisal district is doing a fantastic job of collecting the current accounts. They're collecting around ninety six percent. And as you know, taxes go delinquent every February. The taxpayers get a notice from the appraisal district called a thirty three oh seven notice around May. And that warns the taxpayer, says hello taxpayer, your taxes are delinquent. If they are delinquent on July one, the collection of these delinquencies will be turned over to a delinquent tax firm and a collection penalty of fifteen percent will attach to the account. So once that due process consideration is done and July one comes around, the accounts are turned over to our office for collection. So because the appraisal district is doing a fantastic job collecting around ninety six percent, we're getting around four or five percent each year. So keep that in mind as we go through this to kind of give you some perspective that most of your residents are paying their taxes. So getting into the report, the first chart I have for you is the account breakdown chart. And this gives me a snapshot of your entire delinquent roll, everything that is delinquent that has been turned over to us for all tax years, twenty twenty four and prior. And it tells me where they are in the collection process. So you'll notice the largest percentage is the action pending section at forty percent. So this is predominantly gonna be those twenty twenty four delinquencies that were just turned over to us on July one. And we have a collection center in our, we do the work, the litigation work out of the corner of our office. We have a collection center in our Houston office, and we have a dedicated team that they, they collect, that is their job. So they are reaching out to the taxpayers, they're trying to get them on the phone, they try to reach out to them at least three times, get them on the phone, get them into a payment agreement, make them aware of the situation, give them their options. Sometimes that's all it takes is a phone call, the taxpayer understands the situation, they go to the appraisal district, pay the taxes, and end of. Yes, sir. So, we have a motion from Ms. Stout, second by Ms. Switzer. Any discussion? And I would echo you, Mr. Langley. Ms. Stout does serve in her role in with the safe house that is also collaborative, and we appreciate you doing that. All those in favor of Ms. Stout being the alternate? Opposed, and you voting for yourself? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right. We do need to consider board approval, Resolution twenty-six dash zero five, a nomination for the Walker County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Members, do we have a motion to nominate a member of the Walker County Appraisal District?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Bob Stout.
Okay. I have a nomination for Bob Stout. And a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Burris. Any discussion? Okay, there is none. All those in favor of Bob Stout being nominated for an election for the Walker County Appraisal District Board of Directors, raise your right hand.
I'm standing on that.
Standing on that one? Okay, it does pass. All right. Okay, the next section are reports. Most of them are written only. We do have our next, and by the way, as Ms. Switzer said earlier, thank you especially campus administrators and staff for giving us your written reports, especially all the pictures and all the things that you get to let us know what's happening on your campus. It's very valuable to us. We do have our next item F, our tax delinquent report from Purdue Brandon, and we have Ms. Leslie Scotty do the presentation for us. I hope that I, I think I got it right the first, last time.
You did brilliantly.
You're right. If y'all saw how the scope of the little...
Way too many pronouns in a row. Makes no sense at all. Well, good evening, Dr. Shepherd, President Holling, board of trustees. My name's Leslie Scotty. I'm a partner with the Purdue Brandon Law Firm, where you're a delinquent tax collection firm, and I have before you tonight a delinquent tax collection report. Before I get ahead of myself, I have a guest with me, Jonathan Heedner. Some of you may know him. He is an appraisal analyst with our audit and appeal division. We audit appeal services for school districts to help with their valuations. And he is a Huntsville resident, if you didn't know. So, as we go through the report, these are delinquent taxes only. The appraisal district is doing a fantastic job of collecting the current accounts. They're collecting around ninety-six percent. And as you know, taxes go delinquent every February. The taxpayers get a notice from the appraisal district called a thirty-three oh seven notice around May. And that warns the taxpayer, says hello taxpayer, your taxes are delinquent. If they are delinquent on July one, the collection of these delinquencies will be turned over to a delinquent tax firm, and a collection penalty of fifteen percent will attach to the account. So, once that due process consideration is done, and July one comes around, the accounts are turned over to our office for collection. So, because the appraisal district is doing a fantastic job collecting around ninety-six percent, we're getting around four or five percent each year. So, keep that in mind as we go through this to kind of give you some perspective that most of your residents are paying their taxes. So, getting into the report, the first chart I have for you is the account breakdown chart, and this gives me a snapshot of your entire delinquent role, everything that is delinquent that has been turned over to us for all tax years, twenty twenty-four and prior, and it tells me where they are in the collection process. So, you'll notice the largest percentage is the action pending section at forty percent. So, this is predominantly going to be those twenty twenty-four delinquencies that were just turned over to us on July one. And we have a collection center in our, we do the work, the litigation work out of the corner office. We have a collection center in our Houston office, and we have a dedicated team that they collect. That is their job. So, they are reaching out to the taxpayers. They're trying to get them on the phone. They try to reach out to them at least three times, get them on the phone, get them into a payment agreement, make them aware of the situation, give them their options. Sometimes that's all it takes is a phone call. The taxpayer understands the situation. They go to the appraisal district, pay the taxes, and end of story. Otherwise, they sometimes enter them into a payment agreement, which we monitor. Sometimes we're unable to reach the taxpayer. Sometimes it's heirship property. It's hard to, the property owners are deceased, and it's their heirs that are responsible for the taxes. So, we try to identify them, give them notification, give them an opportunity to pay the taxes. If those situations break down, it goes to the research phase, where we have a department of folks that do title work all day long, and they look at the title, they make sure we have the right property owners on the delinquent role, make sure we're reaching out to the right people, see if there's a lien on the property, so we can reach out to the lien holder, give them notice of the delinquency. So, we work very hard in this phase to try to get the taxes collected and get the property owner aware of the situation. When those situations break down or we're unable to get them into a payment agreement, or they default, sometimes we have to move on to the litigation phase, which is the next largest section at twenty-eight percent. So, this is anything from lawsuit just filed to ready for the next tax sale. So, this covers the whole gamut of everything in the litigation process, so pending suit to judgment entered, ready for a next tax sale. Next largest section is the deferral section. So, this is property owners that have elected to defer payment of their delinquent taxes on their residence homestead. So, they can only elect to defer payment on one property at a time, and it has to be where they reside, as their property they own and use as their residence homestead. During dependency of the deferment, they can choose to pay at any time. They can make partial payment, they can pay in full, whatever their desire, and the taxes are ultimately paid when they feel they use that property as their residence homestead. I'm going to move on to the next chart, which is a dollar range chart. So, it gives you an idea of what percentages of the accounts and what dollar range they fall into. So, you'll note the largest section is the ten thousand and up section. And looking at your delinquent role, this is several of those deferred accounts are in that ten thousand and up section. Otherwise, it's accounts that, I noted three on my delinquent role that have recently been paid. So, that's great news in that ten thousand and up. So, our actions are coming to fruition. And then, everything else in that section is either in litigation, pending litigation, or moving into pending litigation. So, we work through delinquent tax rule top down, so we maximize our efforts and work as efficiently as possible. So, next up, we have the tax year chart, which shows you what percentages of the tax delinquency is attributable to each delinquent tax year. So, you'll notice the largest is twenty twenty-four, what was most recently turned over to us at thirty-two percent. So, many of these are going to be in the pre-litigation phase, where we're really working hard to get the taxpayers' attention so that they can pay their taxes and maintain their interest in the property. After this chart, we have some historical collection data. And as we go through these charts, note that this is the delinquent turnover only. I have a historical chart at the end that shows you everything from what the appraisal district collected and what we've collected. However, this is just the delinquents. So, you'll see at the top what was initially turned over to us, that eight hundred and seventy thousand. And you'll see that we're in year five of collecting that twenty twenty tax delinquency at the bottom right-hand corner. And note that this is through the August, due to the timing of completing the report, this was through the end of month, August update that we received from the appraisal district. And I have similar charting, twenty-one at seventy-eight percent, twenty-two at seventy-four percent, and twenty twenty-three at sixty-three percent collected. And then, the one that I, the last chart, I think you have in your packet, I don't want to forget on the, shows the total collections, gives you some historical data of total collections. So, you'll see in the last column of the report, for the twenty nineteen tax year, for example, the taxes are at ninety-nine point fifty-nine percent collected. So, that, this chart takes what the appraisal district percentage, what they collected, plus what we've collected since that was turned over to us in July of twenty twenty. We are continuously attending dockets to move the cases along. As a matter of fact, I'll be back tomorrow to attend the twelfth district court. So, we alternate on a monthly basis, the two seventy-eight, the twelfth district court, to keep the cases moving along. We had our last tax sale in October, and we're looking to have our next one in February of next year. We're doing about three per year, and we find that to be a pretty, pretty good amount, because we want to set as many as possible during those three tax sales, so that we can get the buyers to the shelter, the storm shelter, and create some competitive bidding. On our last tax sale, the October tax sale, there was, there were several that were paid in full prior to, or we entered into a payment agreement prior to and pulled those from the tax sale. So, that's exactly the type of ending we want to have to those situations. If you're interested in following tax sales, you can visit our website, pdfcm.com. I believe it's on the front page. It's on the front page of your report. You can sign up at the bottom of the website, the homepage, for tax sale notifications, if that's something you're interested in following. We also keep a list when we're having a tax sale of what, for tax sale, and a list of anything that could be available for tax resale. If we didn't sell it at the initial tax sale, it's later available for private or public tax resale. Do y'all have any questions?
Board members, any questions? Ms. Scotty, I do have a question. On the ten thousand dollar and up, which is twenty-six percent of the amount, I think I heard you say that quite a few of those are in litigation.
Correct.
So, they've been around for a while.
Not necessarily. We're, we've already filed suits on, since we've been working since July on the twenty twenty-four delinquencies, we're already, when October starts, we're already to the process, the part of the things where we've reached out, we've made contact, we were unable to make contact, and those are moving into litigation. So, not necessarily older delinquencies. There are some newer delinquencies in that section.
And does this ten thousand, does it include year-on-year non-payments, or is that just one year?
It's all years. It's twenty-four and prior.
Okay.
Everything that's been turned over to us. Yes.
So, it's not a per property value or taxable amount in a calendar year? It could be accumulation on one property?
Absolutely. And it could be multiple properties, too. Our software that we use to collect is a proprietary software that we own, and we get a monthly update from the appraisal district. And what our software does when it converts that data is it recognizes when one taxpayer owns multiple accounts, and it puts them all together. So, sometimes it's also multiple parcels.
Right.
As well as multiple years. That could be making up those dollars in that section.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
No other comments?
Let me, let me ask your question on the tax sales. When they advertise the sale happening, and there's a deal for it or whatever, is, is the county and the city and the hospital district taxes rolled into that? Or a person buys that piece of property at that tax sale, they still have those other taxes hanging out there?
All of the entities are joined together in the judgment. So, when we, the tax code establishes the minimum bid, either it's a lesser of the judgment amount, what's due under the judgment, or the appraised value, whichever is lesser. But, by far, we represent all of the taxing jurisdictions, and we assure that all of the jurisdictions are represented within the judgment, so that all the taxes are paid. There could be a post-judgment tax year, if another year became delinquent after judgment was rendered, but before the next tax sale.
And is that customer at risk of any other lawsuits or anything when y'all post that sale, and somebody buys it? There's always those statements built in there that...
Correct. As is where is, buyer beware, those type of things.
Tell us about that.
Well, we do our absolute very best to ascertain that we are including everybody with an interest in the property, and we have some safeguards for that. But, we are doing our best to include any lien holders and any owners. If we don't know who those owners are, we're having the court appoint, one of the safeguards being, we're having the court appoint an attorney ad litem, who it's their sole job to do diligence and satisfy the court that we have everybody that could have an interest in the property before the court. And those are in situations where the property owner's deceased, they didn't have, this is just one example, they didn't have a probate filing. So, we, no probate court has established who their heirs at law are, or there's no affidavit of heirship filing in the real property records. So, the safeguard is that we are having a court-appointed individual to aid in the research that we've already done, and satisfy the court that we have everyone before the court, and that we are including all, any and all unknown heirs, property owners, et cetera. But, yeah, the tax sales are without warranty. But, we do our absolute best to ascertain that we've got everyone before the court that has an interest in the property, so everyone could have due process and notice if the sale comes time, and that we are conveying the best title we can.
I just thought I'd throw that out there. We're getting some free advice tonight. Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your report.
Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all allowing me to come out and give you a report and keep y'all on notice.
Thank you.
Take care. Please reach out if you have any questions.
Okay, next up, we have our twenty twenty-five, twenty-six district curriculum committee and instructional materials update, Mr. Josh Kimball. We do have a packet on the, with us, board members.
Good evening, President Holling, members of board, trustees, Dr. Shepherd, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on our district's instructional materials this evening. Tonight, I will share with you an overview of our current adoption and implementation efforts, highlight recent developments from the Texas Education Agency, and outline next steps as we continue our commitment to ensuring all students have access to high-quality standards aligned instructional resources that support both teaching and learning. The presentation is somewhat extensive. However, it's very informational in regards to a new process. So, and then we'll kind of talk about some high-quality instructional materials. Tonight's message revolves around two critical components, teachers and instructional materials. If there's one thing we can all remember from our schooling years, it's that teacher that made a difference. An effective teacher is the single most influential factor in student achievement within the school environment. In essence, great teachers don't just deliver lessons. They learn, they make learning meaningful and ensure students can connect to the content and real-world understanding. However, even the most skilled teacher needs the right tools. High-quality instructional materials serve as the foundation for instructional excellence, giving teachers reliable content and resources to maximize their impact. In essence, effective teaching brings materials to life, and strong materials elevate great teaching. Together, they create the conditions for sustained academic growth and equity across classrooms. Our learning objectives this evening include an explanation of what constitutes a high-quality instructional material, the process the state of Texas uses to overview or to review and adopt high-quality instructional materials, how needs assessments are conducted here within HISD by instructional material committees, and their purpose in the review and adoption of said materials. We will discuss some key factors that should be considered when adopting those materials, and then finally, we will take some time to review a sample of a high-quality instructional material and how it's structured to support both teaching and learning. We'll start this evening by talking about House Bill sixteen oh five. From the eighty-eighth legislation session, restructured Texas instructional material system by creating EMRA process, or the Instructional Material Review and Approval Process. Here, you will find some key components of that legislation, important factors including requiring local review procedures, expanding funding and teacher supports, developing state-owned blue bot learning materials, and updating standards, phonics rules, and also teacher planning protections. As with any legislative change, the why is what is most important. The process was restructured from the proclamation process that you see here to the more expanded EMRA process. Here, you'll see that within the proclamation process, it's what we've known for years in regards to an eight-year cycle. And basically, it's very state-driven, it's cyclical, it's more rigid, and districts are allowed to choose from an approved list. This cycle allowed for states and districts, as I said, to review materials every eight years. The new process is more modernized. It's teacher and district inclusive, so it includes district and teacher committee members that go through the approval process. It has online accessibility, state-developed options, and ongoing updates. This newly revised process has a cycle adding new content each year for approval, but also includes ongoing updates. Basically, as an example, meaning that RLA and math materials are now reviewed each year with new publishers and new adoptions that meet high-quality instructional material criteria. So, what is high-quality instructional materials? Here, you see within the EMRA process, in order to be considered a high-quality instructional material, it has to ensure full coverage of the Texas essential knowledge and skills. Now, back in the day, before all this gray hair happened, when I was an educator, in a classroom, basically, Common Core is what's driven across the nation, right, in regards to standards that are used across the nation in different public school settings. Texas is different. We have the Texas essential knowledge and skills. In the old process, in order for publishers to say that their publishing and material align to the T's, you know, they had to match fifty-one percent of the standards. So, unless you were in the process and knew that, you wouldn't know that, right? What the state did with this new bill is they created the EMRA process to where now, to be a high-quality instructional material, you have to align to a full hundred percent of the standards and align to the rigor as well. In addition to that, you have to align to the English language proficiency standards, as well as the pre-kindergarten guidelines, which guidelines that drive early childhood education. They have to be evidence-based practices. They must support all learners, as you see here. Another big point is the frequent progress monitoring, meaning that not only are the materials aligned to the level of rigor and standards, but the assessments that come with it are also aligned to that. There has to be implementation support. So, once these materials are adopted as a high-quality instructional material, they also have to have job-invented professional development supports to go along with it. So, it's not just that simple training that you could go to. It's also job-invented coaching. And then, obviously, they have to receive approval from the State Board of Education during, throughout the EMRA process. While HQIM must meet the criteria shown on that previous slide, instructional materials are generally categorized into three types as a result of the EMRA process. Here, the first one you'll see is a full subject tier one. In essence, it means it completely covers a hundred percent of the standards and is without the need of supplementation, meaning there's no need for additional resources. It covers everything that's required for the standards. The second type is a partial subject tier one. This one would provide mastery over a portion of an essential standard or skill. And if covering that particular portion of the standard, they also would require supplementation. An example here would be in our retarded interpretation, when you're talking about reading and RLA, this may be phonics. So, just phonics would cover a portion of those standards, which would make it a partial subject, tier one. And then, the third type through the EMRA process is supplemental instructional materials, which are designed to assist instruction in one or more of the central standards. They are not intended to be standalone materials. In Texas, several funding streams or buckets, if you will, are available to school districts and open enrollment charter schools for purchasing instructional materials. These include the first bucket, which is our instructional materials and technology allotment. It is the largest bucket. It's the one that's used for general funds across the board, across every public education system. It is a binding allotment, which means it aligns with legislative years and legislative sessions. It is a broad range of adopted and unadopted instructional materials, so it does include instructional technology, technology support, and training. The second bucket is a State Board of Education-approved instructional materials entitlement, not allotment. It is an entitlement that is funded for forty dollars for every enrolled student, and it only includes the purchase of EMRA-approved materials. And it is a carryover to future years, so this one will carryover. The third and final bucket is the state-developed open education resource entitlement. Open education resource materials reside in the public domain and are released through all, through an intellectual property license, allowing free use, modification, and sharing with others. with others. This particular entitlement is an annual entitlement as well, it's $20, funded at $20 per enrolled student. It allows for the printing of state-developed BlueBonnet instructional materials, and it does not carry over to future years. In essence, the final two buckets only, can only be used on high-quality instructional materials. Post-COVID research revealed that public school districts across the nation spent over $60 billion in additional to their normal expenditures for instructional materials to address learning gaps of time during COVID. In an effort to support our campuses during teacher shortage and to assist our students with acquired learning gaps from COVID, we too, as a district, purchased additional instructional materials that, due to sheer volume, have now created some dilution and inconsistency across the district as it relates to Tier One instruction. Although this was not our intent, it is our reality. In response to our current reality, campus curriculum committees have recognized the need to share, to streamline our instructional material resources. As you can see here, our current reality highlights the need to adopt more rigorous TEES-aligned, high-quality instructional materials to better support teachers and prepare students for future learning, while also identifying how entitlement funds can be used for future expenditures through the EMRA process. Here you can see that of our 12 core instructional materials that we currently use, only one of them meets the criteria of a high-quality instructional material. There's other factors that we can put in here, I only had enough room for three bullets, but approximately $165,000 are spent annually in Huntsville on supplemental materials alone. Approximately $462,000 are spent annually on partial-subject-approved instructional materials through that main purchasing bucket of IMIT. These could be replaced with those other two buckets of State Board of Education-approved materials and OAR entitlement funds, freeing up those other funds for additional training supports and PD supports. So what are our curriculum committee and what's the process? A curriculum instructional material committee plays a critical role in ensuring that the teaching and learning resources used in a school or district are high-quality, aligned with the standards and meet the needs of students and teachers. Steps associated with the committee process include that they are driven by policy EFA legal and local, that they comprise the parents and campus and district educators, that they analyze current needs across the district and campuses, that they consider materials, as we're talking about this evening, based on set criteria, and then ultimately, that they submit recommendations to the Board of Trustees, because obviously, you are the standing body of that approved instructional materials within the district. Recently, the Teaching and Learning Department engaged with campus-based instructional material committees to solicit comprehensive feedback on current instructional materials, including the usage, effectiveness, strengths, and limitations. During these meetings, the department also provided an overview of this new instructional material review and approval process as outlined to approve high-quality instructional materials. When asked, what do you consider the greatest advantage of using our current set of instructional materials, survey results revealed that staff appreciated the variety of resources, the online options, oh, sorry, ability to scaffold instruction to meet students' needs, the alignment to the TEES, and varied levels of rigor, and the most prominent response throughout all of the feedback that was received was just simply the variety of resources. When asked, what do you consider the greatest barrier or deficiency of using our current set of instructional materials, survey results revealed that staff expressed knowing how to use them to teach an effective lesson, information overload for new teachers to know how to use them effectively, and they stated that we are resource-rich, which is great, how it does tend to be overwhelming for teachers to learn to navigate them and use each of them to their full potential. They think having a progress monitoring piece or that assessment piece aligned to the instructional materials was important, and it's a barrier. Teacher knowledge and content and use of the material, they need more training and modeling. The most prominent response in regards to this is although we have a variety, that it seems overwhelming that they have to choose and implement with fidelity. And then finally, when asked, when considering the adoption of future instructional materials, what considerations or wants would you expect the district curriculum committee to consider? And the survey results revealed from committee members that meeting the rigor of the TEES and available support for implementation of new resources is important, that the alignment to TEES, the easy navigation, and the intentional training on the utilization, and the benefits to the resource that could be used for the multiple abilities in tiered instruction. They would want us to definitely expect our district to consider availability in Spanish since we are a bilingual district. Research-based alignment with the state assessment and curriculum that is relevant and rigorous, and the most prominent response of this is that simple training and coaching. House Bill 8, that was recently adopted in September 2025 in the 89th Legislative Special Session, introduced significant changes to the state's student assessment system. These reforms aim to reduce testing burdens, enhance instructional support, and improve transparency for educators and parents. Here you see the key factors of House Bill 8. In addition to providing shorter assessments throughout the year, with systemic intervention and enrichment opportunities, the most prominent change for House Bill 8 is the more direct involvement that the Texas Education Agency will now play in the development and oversight of the end-of-the-year STAR assessments. This is a new twist to a particular statute where TEA had less involvement in the actual creation of the test, more so than they did in the past. The truth is, this change reveals that the same agency that's created the law to create high-quality instructional materials that are fully aligned to the level of rigor and provide the support are also the same agency that's writing the test. So what are some key factors and takeaways from our discussions thus far? And they are that the state has established a more comprehensive approach to ensuring that adopted instructional materials are both high-quality and aligned to the rigor of the standards. This approach also allows teachers to focus more on delivering effective first-time instruction rather than creating it. Furthermore, the same agency providing these materials now has direct oversight of the assessment development, creating greater alignment between instruction and evaluation. So when talking with these committees, these were important factors that we said moving forward with any adoption, whether high-quality instructional materials or not, that we think we should consider as a deciding button. One is the Tier One alignment to the standards and rigor, which we spoke a lot of this evening. Also, the current state of the district. This was a topic of discussion in regards to basically our current accountability rankings, right, across the district. So that's definitely something we would want to consider. Staffing considerations and trends, when you consider that over 40% of our teachers are zero to three years and are lacking in some of their content knowledge, is the staffing considerations and trends we would want to consider with the materials that we're purchasing. Again, the STAR and state testing changes in that alignment. Curricular alignment and testing supports, again, high-quality instructional materials have those aligned assessments built within them. Job-invented professional development, there are grant funds that can be applied for in regards to high-quality instructional materials that fund job-invented PD coaching throughout implementation years when purchasing high-quality instructional materials. And then obviously, we talked about the funding option. One of the things that I didn't mention, and you heard probably a couple of times, is the internalization process of high-quality instructional materials. Basically, what that means is, is that currently, our teachers do a wonderful job within our PLC structure of creating and understanding the TEES and their standards and creating lessons. We found that they spend so much time creating and understanding the standards that they don't get as much time being trained on how to implement those lessons that they create. The good thing about high-quality instructional materials and being aligned to the standards 100% is those lessons are already created, and it's just simply how do we implement those so we get to spend more time coaching teachers on how to teach. So this evening, let me go back one step. The final phase of our presentation is meant to provide some insight into one of several options when considering high-quality instructional materials. Currently, all instructional materials when purchased are purchased for a two- to three-year time span. When purchased, they are paid in full with no recurring cost each year except for consumables. These are all purchased through the IMTA funding source, and the purpose of tonight is to simply explain the new member process and consider available high-quality instructional materials. So next, in the final phase of this, is simply just to kind of share with you an example of a high-quality instructional material and the supports that are provided with it. Please understand, this is a sample, all right? Currently, there are nine total full-subject high-quality instructional material approvals from the EMRA process, and there are nine total partial-subject approvals. And so again, this is just one of those examples, okay? So using a presentation from our friends at Region Six, we will briefly review one of the full-subject EMRA approvals to give you a better understanding of its structure and the support provided. So I'll go through these pretty quickly, but basically, it's considered BlueBonnet learning, it's created by the state, it is a high-quality instructional material, it currently is written in services K through five RLA, K through five math, and then also secondary math, which would be grade six through eight, and Algebra I. We'll also talk a little bit about growth for the district's supports for the BlueBonnet learning in regards to professional development and funding. This is basically the EMRA process on one slide. So basically, it goes through a standards alignment, the suitable and appropriate, it uses quality review suitability rubrics, and these are online, you can see all these, and it's not just for BlueBonnet, it's for any high-quality instructional material. It reviews for factual errors, physical and electronic specifications must be met, and the other factor that high-quality instructional materials provide is they must be included in a parent portal to show full transparency to our parents. Here you see a layout of the EMRA process. The thing that you want to notice here is that we no longer have that eight-year cycle, so science doesn't come around every eight years to be approved for instructional materials. You see here the way the cycles work, because it started with math and RLA, and every year that is cumulative, so every year, new math and RLA materials are reviewed through the EMRA process, and additional content are added to that cycle. Currently, in our district, the goal is to have 100% of schools for Region Six, they said utilizing high-quality instructional materials. Within our region, 27% have now adopted K through five RLA BlueBonnet, 41% have adopted K through five math, and 27% have adopted secondary math. These next slides I'm going to briefly go through because it just simply shares, and you have them in your packet, the structure of each one of these. Here's the RLA, K through five, it shows you it can be a skill strand or an actual content strand, and it shows it by grade level, that once you get into other grade levels, they're integrated, right, so it's conceptual knowledge being took through application years. All right, it shows you the minutes that would be required for those master schedules. You're going to see one of these slides after each one that basically gives you the benefits of those things, it's the coherent units and lesson sequence across grade levels, knowledge-based instruction, cross-curricular content, which is what we're seeing in our assessments now. So when RLA is tested, they use science and history excerpts from the standard, so it's important to make sure those things are right. It is grade-level and complex text, it's also moved away from the old school of remediation to acceleration of instruction, meaning you have to expose students to grade-level content, you can't keep going backwards to catch them up, you've got to align it and pull them up as you're aligning that instruction. Here's BlueBonnet math and the way it's structured. The thing that's different about the math, and this is a good example, is that the primary difference is that instead of explaining a correct way to solve a problem, which you see here on the left, a model that we currently follow, teachers engage students in challenging tasks that foster conceptual understanding and a culture of learning. In a conventional lesson, the common goal of warm-up and a guided practice is for all students to meet 100% proficiency, which typically reveals a lower-level rigor task if your students are reaching that, yeah, across the board. However, the goal during fluency practice, which you see on the other side, is to rarely get 100% right, and it's to foster the grit, the problem-solving, and the critical thinking that goes along with that. So this metacognitive approach fosters resiliency, grit, and confidence within our students. Here you see another slide just simply showing you the benefits of elementary math and the conceptual understanding and procedural skill. This particular slide gives you an example of the materials provided, so one thing with high-quality instructional materials, they must provide both teacher-facing and student-facing materials. And so here you see that they've provided those in addition to course-level materials that have manipulatives, as well as parent guides and family guides that support the work at home. The secondary math is not going to be any different in regards to the benefits of those materials. And then here, what growth has been seen within these, the use of these materials is, Region Six stated, with those that have been implemented, and we've talked to several of these districts over the last month that are implementing these high-quality instructional materials, and the things that they have listed here from Region Six aligned with the comments we've received, is that particularly, instructional practices and content knowledge are getting stronger with consistent use of the materials. Overall scores, as with any implementation, are holding steady as teachers and students adjust. There is second-year usage or showing larger gains. The biggest gain that we've noticed, and from conversations with districts we've spoken with, is there is a larger impact of moving kids from meets to masters. And then the continued implementation will be further growth over time. Through the implementation, we talked about the job-invented supports. Here you see that with, through those grant funds with high-quality instructional materials, including BlueBonnet materials, there's job-invented training for all these various roles of district leaders, campus leaders, instructional coaches, and teachers, and those are not just in the initial implementation here. Additionally, you can see here in details implementation supports, the support that you receive from the district, I mean, as far as from the region, and then also, again, down at the bottom, you'll notice the job-invented and the PLC and internalization piece. Across Region Six, this would be the growth you've seen as far as strong foundations implementation, which is the implementation process for high-quality instructional materials. 2324, there was four districts, it went to six districts, and now currently this year there's 15 districts implementing high-quality instructional materials. And then this again shows you that for high-quality instructional materials, you get to spend those funds out of those other two buckets. So our next steps in this process is, now that we've visited with all of the campus committees, our next step is that the district curriculum instructional committee will convene on October 23rd. We will take all of the feedback, explain the EMRA process to that group as well, as we've done with you and with them already, and at that point, we will determine, that committee would determine what our next steps are in regards to consideration of high-quality instructional materials and streamlining the materials that we have to better equip our teachers and our students. Our goal is to provide an update and/or any HQIM recommendations at our next board meeting. So the purpose this evening was to simply provide an update on our current reality and explain the new EMRA process. Teacher the most influential factor in student achievement, but obviously, knowledge and experience level impact a teacher's effectiveness in the classroom. Educators across our district are only as effective as the tools they use. With our current staff and trends, both in Huntsville and across the state, it is our responsibility as a district to provide all teachers experienced and novice with the proper tools and resources necessary to ensure each one learns at high levels, and our hard-working teachers are confident and successful. My team and I want to thank you again for this opportunity this evening, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have at this time.
Josh, are we bringing myself to the board of the board? JT and I were training at Region Six on Monday. They kind of implied that that was the direction of the program, exactly, as far as Region Six.
Can you restate that question?
I'm sorry. I can turn this on off this evening.
JT and I were at Region Six on Monday, I think, what day we were there, and they were talking about this BlueBonnet curriculum. I almost want to say he said that they also were the ones that wrote the test, but I may have dreamed that. Is that right? Yeah, so are we going to go towards that, or?
That's, this, this process has changed over the last three or four years, right, the approval process, and the reason the approval process changed is because materials that were being developed and provided by publishers, the state was saying, due to the test scores across the state, that some of our test scores across the state, that some of our materials across the state were not aligned to the level of rigor of our teams. And so they created this EMRA process to ensure that there was a process to where all standards, if instructional materials were approved through EMRA, they were 100% aligned to the level of the rigor of the standard, and then all of those other supports. What you're seeing now with this process and with the latest legislation is now the people that are creating some of those high quality instructional materials, whether it be the state or other people, because they're aligned to that level of rigor, is that it's aligned to the level of the test. Now, the new legislation now, as you just stated, has that if the state is the one creating those high quality instructional materials, which in this case would be BlueBonnet, are the same people writing the test.
That's what I thought he said.
Yes, well, that's correct.
So that kind of seems like it's, would be smart to go with BlueBonnet.
Is that a question?
No. I just take that anyway, you want to?
I would be happy to answer it.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah.
That's what I'm doing, okay.
And the feedback that we've seen across the campus committees, when that part of it is explained, is the thing that you have to consider is that from the districts we've talked to, is that a lot of the districts we've talked to that are implementing this have the same HR training staffing challenges that we have, new teachers love it, because the content and the level of rigor is there and they get to spend more time being taught how to teach it and internalizing it within the PLC process. You know, when you look at more experienced teachers, as a more experienced, I was a better teacher the 17th year than I was the first year, right? All of us are, and so it's simply, you have a toolbox that you can take this high quality instructional material and enhance it even more, but as a new teacher, I need to make sure the level of rigor is there. Our kids can't wait for a year, a fifth-year teacher to get to that level, they cannot, and they can't across the state, that's why it's so.
I found it also interesting, the training that we did was at ISAB, ISAB whatever, and he also said we will no longer be able to skate by with an hour and a half, the state's requiring us from this training we took forward, it's a required three-hour training even for us board members to make sure that we get it.
Mr. Langley.
You know, maybe it's a good thing I'm getting off this boat, but it's been a forest for 27 years, we see all of these different curriculums, we've seen it all revolve, and Mr. Campbell, I think you're right on target trying to get our, our material that we need to teach our kids in the alignment, I give you an A-plus credit for moving targets right now, but I still think we're missing, the problem we've got in Huntsville's been a problem, we've got a high turnover most of the time with teachers, we've got so many young teachers, we need to also look at spending money for great mentors for our teachers, instead of academic coaches, we need teacher coaches, just like an old veteran coach out there training a football coach to be a, just because you call him a coach, don't make him a coach.
Yes, sir.
And, and you hit it right on the head with that, when you became the great teacher, and I think we need to look, we're going to have to spend the money for this, we've got to have a great curriculum, we've got to have the right thing, but I think we need to focus on how are we training our people? You offer a $1,500 mentor fee, everybody in the world's going to sign up, but does that make that a great person to coach, that new teacher? The evaluation of how we get those people, we identify them, you may have a teacher that's been with us 30 years, and their students that always make the high scores were the ones they were able to pick, and they were put in AP classes or whatever, did that make that a super teacher? No, she had super students. And, and to me, as a tail end of this thing, finishing off my career, I'd like to see us focus more on training our teachers so they will be teachers and not just presenters of documents.
Very true, and I would say that you mentioned training and coaching, all of us can sit in front of a presentation like you did tonight, but it would take a lot more effort to coach you on this stuff than it would to train you on this stuff, we have to coach teachers as well. We, the good thing about this material is when you look and ask districts that have and have done and moved forward with high quality instructional materials, BlueBonnet or not BlueBonnet, high quality instructional materials, they have PLC processes, they have systems in place with ICs, and they had master schedules that supported it, and so when we talked to those districts, they said these were the things you have to have to support this implementation, and that's why we're seeing growth, we have those structures in place already.
Right. And I look forward to some of that growth.
Me too.
Mr. Campbell, thank you for your work in this and for leading the team, I'd love to see a list of the committee members, just to see, but I can't imagine being a new teacher and trying to do everything that they have to do, and I can imagine that, that the instruction takes up a lot of time, so I'm excited for the new teachers, but just to make sure teachers that have years of experience, that have amazing ideas, will still be able to implement those along with the, with the program that you're talking about.
Yeah, and that's a piece that we've talked about with other districts as well, because you have that very tried, but the thing that I've shared there with people is, you know, you want, do you want someone who's got 15 years' experience, that's done a poor job, or do you want somebody that's got 15 material, because 15 years' experience doesn't always mean anything, right?
Right.
All I know is, is being out on our campuses, and my team knows this, is we, every staff member we have in this district works their job. I've yet to find a person that's not working hard, we have to get them the materials.
Oh, I wasn't looking at you, Dr. Scherfer.
We've got to make sure they have the materials they need, and we've got to give them the support they need. The simple thing about that is, whatever material is adopted, regardless of what it is, we have to build a coherent system of what tier-one instruction looks like across the district, and you can't do that if you don't have a curriculum that can be saying, this is our primary curriculum we're going to use, not to say we're not going to have supplemental, because we will, but it empowers the teacher that has the skill set already to take that and mold it and shape it and do what they will with it, but for a novice teacher, it allows me to say, here, I need to teach this content while someone's coaching me on how to implement it.
And I can't, I, it's going to help our vertical and horizontal alignment completely, so I can't.
We're only doing a good job of that, that's something we started the last couple of years, and Mr. Forney and the team have done a great job of that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you, you, your team did a presentation for us last month, and there were a lot of things in it that, you know, we talked about, and results and the outcomes that you're looking for, but it's hard to understand how you're going to get to that.
Yeah.
You know, you walk out going, oh yeah, they got a plan, then how are we going to do it? And I think that this information gives all of us that vision of where we're going, how we're going to establish the rigor and move everybody in the same direction, so thank you for the presentation.
And we will, we have the rest of the.
Mr. Campbell, in your opening statement, I think you mentioned something to the effect that you were a former educator or used to be an educator, I would argue that you are still an educator. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to throw that out there, the way you said that, yep. Going, there was a, when you look at the BlueBonnet elementary math example, that it really resonated would be on the conventional lesson versus the K-five math lesson, and in parentheses it says going from a culture of compliance to a culture of learning, I think that should be a, like a tagline across everything we do, because I, in my role as a financial advisor with my firm, I'm the leader of culture of compliance, which, so that I really honed in on that. But we're a very, very highly regulated industry, and I'm the bad guy that gets to send out stuff that'll say, hey, you need to do this, this, and this, but when I do that, if I act that way, if I don't have a level of influence that's positive, they're not going to do what I say. So when it says culture of compliance to culture of learning, if you can utilize that as your training and, and the implementation, I mean, I know it's just words that we hear of, but it has a lot of meaning in it, especially to me. On the funding, and I'm glad you got to this, I had a note on the very first slide because it didn't, it just said $40 per student, but it says enrolled students, so I was, I'm glad to see it's per enrolled and not average daily attendance or anything like that, so I mean, it's, it's the materials that each student needs, whether they're absent one day or not, so.
Exactly.
And if I, I think I saw some numbers where that would kind of equate to about 380,000 total-ish, if I'm, if my district numbers are correct, I don't know, but, and I'm not putting anybody on the spot, but I'm saying, but if you've done the math on, you know, what it's going to be able to, what we're spending now on curriculum, is it going to be able to cover that, is it, it's going to help us from a budgetary standpoint?
Right now, those two buckets would, regardless of which HQIM we choose, will well pay for over and above and beyond what we would need for those materials, and it would free up that first bucket, that's the key, because with instructional technology, training and support for our teachers, they're going to be able to use that money for other resources then at that time.
And so that's, that's new per money for our district as we come into this process and utilize this that could then be freed up to be spent elsewhere.
It's the only, that's the only thing you're going to spend it on.
Okay, thank you.
That was a move by the House side of the legislature, the House attempted to try to move away from daily attendance to enrollment, that's a shift they're trying to move where you get more money and it's not just based on daily attendance.
Mr. Langley, whatever you can do to help us get that fully across the board, thank you very much. Any other questions? Great report, and we look forward to hearing back from you in our next meeting to get this thing moving along. All right, the next presentation is going to be for our CTE report for 2425, Dr. Jamie Johnson.
I am excited to provide you an overview of the 2425 CTE program. So all of our classes for CTE are offered in grade seven through high school, and this is just an overview of our contacts for the CTE program, both at the programmatic level and then at the campus level. There's one person I'd like to introduce to you this evening, Ms. Carpenter, come on up. Ms. Carpenter is our new CTE coordinator, I'm very proud to have Ms. Carpenter onboard as a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, she has been a great asset to our program as a former teacher of CTE and her work within the CTE world, I'm very glad to have her onboard and supporting our students and our teachers in the CTE program.
Welcome.
She tries to slip off. I always like to provide an overview of what's happened in CTE over the past few years and just a short synopsis to try to bring you up to speed. Back in 1917, the federal role in the area of CTE began with the National Vocational Education Act of 1917. This was the very first investment that the government had in secondary vocational education. Forty-six years later, we came in with the Vocational Education Act of 1963, and that was where the vocation education, that expanded to all ages and all communities. Then moving forward in 98, we have the Perkins Vocational and Technical Education Act that was approved. This act really focused on some various areas, but it brought in our business partnerships, which are so important to us and Bible, in our CTE world with our students and our teachers, and what it also did is it supported our skill-based career education. And then in 2018, Perkins five came in, and that really focused on our programs of study and our efforts to enhance CTE with our special education populations. You do have a copy in front of you of our CTE programs of study, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on in the presentation for the 2526 year. Just an overview of our mission, of course, we're all, we are focused on providing those comprehensive course offerings, and I'm going to talk about those varied experiences so we can empower our students for both their academic and career goals. And then for a successful CTE program, of course, we know that it has to have hands-on learning experience, obvious, we, obviously, we're going to include those work-based learning opportunities and vast opportunities for our students, we're going to make sure that it aligns with our college and career readiness standards and support our local industry This is a quote from the Association of Career and Technical Education, ACTE, from February 2022, and what I wanted you to focus on here is the fact that CTE students have a lower dropout rate and higher on-time graduation, graduate, graduation rates? I can't get that out, graduation rates, then when they transition to, and when they transition to those post-secondary education. Some statutory requirements is the fact that we want our students to have and be prepared for the dual roles of family member and, as a family member and a wage earner, and of course, we always talk about creating productive citizens of our students, but in CTE, we also want to focus on those high-skill, high-wage jobs and the continued education of the students, possibly at the post-secondary level if they choose. The state does require that we have a minimum of one CTE coherent sequence from three different career clusters, and what that means is a coherent sequence is it means you've got levels of courses, those levels range from levels one through four, and those courses are in a sequence that makes sense, just like English one, English two, English thirteen, English four, it's the same in CTE. We've got some of our principals classes that then lead into the next level of classes that lead all the way up to our level four classes, which are more career-based, career prep, or those internships that our students go into in the job field. To give you an organization of how CTE works, you have to think of it kind of like an umbrella or a larger circle, circle, you have career clusters, and the state offers 14 career clusters, and we offer 12 of those career clusters. Then within each career cluster, you have multiple programs of study, and so, that's the last E, we currently offer 18 programs of study with our newest program of study that we added this year, which was real estate. Then looking at how many courses under each of those programs of study that are offered, and we do offer around 98 courses for our students to choose from, when you think about that, that is a vast option of courses for our kiddos. Then we move into, well, how many industry-based certifications do we offer? And out of each of those programs of study, overall, just offering 18 programs of study, we offer more than 35 industry-based certification, certifications, where our students can walk out of high school and walk into the job market and be competitive because they have earned those industry-based certifications. As I said, you have an overview of those career clusters and those programs of study there at your table, but we also have the examples of the career clusters that we do offer, and the career clusters that we don't offer are energy and information technology, and that's just because based off of our area, our, our labor market, it just doesn't make sense for our labor market. Industry-based certification. Industry-based certifications have become a big area of CTE in the, in the past few years. It's also become a big area of state and accountability. And so this time last October, um, for the twenty-four, oh, excuse me. Yes, this time last October for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, fifty-five percent of our seniors have earned an industry-based certification as a concentrator in their program of study. So that means that they had taken, um, not just level-one courses, but level-two courses, level-three courses. A completer, which is what we're working on this year, are students that have taken level-one, level-two, and majority have taken level-three and/or level-four courses, depending on the number of credits offered. So, um, a hundred and seven seniors last year earned two or more industry-based certifications. And that was an increase of fifty-four students compared to the year before. And so that's just not only industry-based certification, but that's two or more. So a lot of our students lock out with three, two, three industry-based certifications, and they could even be in different areas, which makes the job market open to them. Currently, our current standings as of right now for our twenty-five, twenty-six school year, twenty-three percent of our seniors have earned an industry-based certification in their program of study. And we have forty-one seniors who have earned two or more IBCs so far this school year. Now, I'll also tell you, the industry-based certifications start gearing up somewhere around November and it starts getting, uh, very fast and furious time, January, all the way through the spring semester. So we have students that are testing all the time. Our students can earn an industry-based certification at their freshman year, all the way up to their senior year. These are examples of what we call CTSO, or our Career and Technical Student Organizations. These are very important for our CTE students and our CTE coursework. These are co-curricular opportunities for our students to engage in competitions where they earn, um, certificates, but they can also earn a lot of money in scholarships. So when our students, you see our students out at competitions, it's not just because they're having fun, although they are with their advisors. It's because they're competing across not, not just our state, but also our nation. And our students are performing at very high levels in their areas. And here we go. Here are some examples of our CTE student achievements from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, you can see it across the board, of course, our welding team, which you hear a lot about, that wonderful bench that's out front in the lobby, was created by a welding team, if I remember right, a couple of years ago. And, um, our teams come back from competitions all the time. And, um, if I remember correctly, our welding students earned about five hundred thousand dollars in scholarships last year. And so they're well on their way this year to earn their scholarships. That's, that's big money for our kiddos in, in that field. Um, but not only do we have it in welding, we also have it in law enforcement. We have, um, our FFA students. In fact, our FFA students are at the state fair right now, getting ready for competition. Our culinary arts program, our cosmetology program. And by the way, I was able to step in and help out, help out our cosmetology students. I was very proud of that. And ladies, they give wonderful facials for twenty dollars plus tips. So I encourage you to take, take advantage of that. It's pretty fantastic. I always volunteer if they need anybody to practice on. It's always great. But, um, we're very proud of our FCCLA students and everything that they're working hard on. Of course, these are our upcoming events that we've got happening throughout the school year. These are not our only events, though. These are just kind of some that we could list here. We have multiple opportunities for our students to compete and earn awards and prizes for our school district and for themselves. I do want to bring your attention to that picture of Ms. Small and two students. This summer, they went to the education Educators Rising National Competition. That was in Florida, if I remember correctly. Two students, one second place in their area for the nation, and two students, one third place for the nation in their area. And so we encourage you to come out to any event. Of course, we have the Hornet, um, welding, uh, call-out this weekend. It's on Saturday. If you come to the back of the high school parking lot, you can't miss it. We're going to have school districts from all over Texas that's going to be competing. And so, um, our students and other district students have a great time at this. And, um, overall, we're very proud and thankful for what our teachers and our students do together because not only are they doing great things, but they're also learning job-embedded skills that will help them flourish when they leave high school, which is what we want them to be productive citizens. Are there any questions?
Mr. Langley? Does your air, would you like this area? I was just going to ask when President Wilson in nineteen seventeen, did he appoint you to get this started?
Ouch.
No. No, I think it's very, um, I'm sorry, did any of the members have any comments?
I did, but you're welcome.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Just thank you for your work in this. My son is in college in part because of the welding program. Uh, he's working on welding engineering up at Laterno and doing very well. Um, and so I, I know the value of this. And I've seen so many kids go on and, and just have great opportunities. I do challenge you all, not that you have enough on your plate. I'd love to see more meaningful opportunities for special education students within, um, the CTE programs. Matthew, my other son, was actually able to get an industry-based certification. Um, but I also know other students that didn't have the same meaningful opportunities. So I'd love to see some collaboration on that, um, when that opportunity arises in the programs. But you all do such a fantastic job in giving all of our kids opportunities to just help pave the way for an amazing future.
Thank you. I'm very proud of the teachers. Um, they work so well, they work so hard at this. And it is, it's truly, um, they love the students and they love what they're doing. So thank you, I'll pass that along.
Just what, commenting on the amount of programs that we have, you know, I think many of the schools around the state, um, or districts around the state don't even, they may just have a handful, if that many, to have this many is impressive. So then you, I was going to ask the question, which, which ones we do not have? And you said that, and I was like, well, why can't we have those? But it makes sense. But, uh, on information technology, the reason why not having that, what I would ask is if we could, uh, again, reach out to San Houston with their new Polytechnic Institute, because that's one of their clusters. And if we could have a pipeline feeding into them, I think that would be appropriate. But obviously, we'd have to staff that. But I think, uh, that would be something to look at. On, under law and public safety, last spring when we did the, uh, tour of the CTE buildings, uh, we were in the, the law enforcement area in, in the, where they have a, a paramedic box. Do we have E, uh, paramedic and EMT clustering yet or credentialed yet?
We don't yet. And part of, I'll kind of explain, part of what happens when we go through and look at what programs of study do we keep, what programs of study do we, um, move away from? We have to look at first facilities. We have to look at staffing. Um, we have to look at budget. And we have to look at master schedule of the high school. And so with those four factors in place, this past school year, we actually, in previous years, we've offered nineteen programs, programs of study. Um, I'm sorry, I forgot one more, student interest, which is very important. Um, but we did away with one because of lack of student interest and because of the fact that, um, we were dwindling in the number of people that could teach it. And looking at what other programs of study offer, we were able to easily put in real estate program of study because all we had to do was offer one course in addition to what we already had. And so we, we look at it very intently. The conversation has come up. And, and that's part of our process that we do in the fall semester is just look at what's the possibility of it. But we would look, have to look into those factors, um, as to whether or not it would be something that we could add. And again, going back, do we have the staff that could teach it? Do we have the student interest? So that's something that we could look into across the board. But if I remember correctly, looking at the state's programs of study, that would mean that we would need to add another program of study into that, which could possibly mean four additional courses. So, um, I looked at it a little bit earlier on this semester, but I can certainly look at it again.
Yeah, the EMT and, and the paramedics, pretty intensive. And so I'd imagine it's, you know, it's not a, a one-course deal, so you have, and then having the people to teach it. But just curious, thank you so much for that.
Um, also, we are, um, Ms. Heedner and Ms. Bauer are working on getting our students in law enforcement, CPR, and, um, the AI. AED.
Oh, yeah, AED.
Um, getting those students trained on that. And so we're bringing in, um, outside personnel that they contacted in order to turn those students on that.
They've done a really good job on the law enforcement side.
They have.
Well, thank you very much. Dr. Johnson, I think you're going to stay here with us for the next presentation of Advanced Placement Results and Dual Credit Courses Report.
Yes, sir. I was looking for those fabulous counselor ladies. I was trying to find them back here in the hall. I asked them, I said, ladies, would you please be here and take those any questions? So good evening again. Um, I'm going to provide you an overview of the twenty-four, twenty-five Advanced Placement Results and Dual Credits. I'm going to start with Mance Park Middle School. Mance Park Middle School is the first opportunity that our students have to enroll in those advanced type of courses. Um, those pre-AP courses that you see there are what they have an opportunity in seventh and eighth grade to be a part of. Um, those classes are not limited except for mathematics, which is pre-algebra. There's a, um, there's a compacting in seventh grade where they receive seventh-grade math the fall semester and eighth-grade math the spring semester. They take the eighth-grade star in the spring semester. And that way, they're able to move into Algebra One in the eighth grade. So they're basically taking two years of math in one. That would be the only caveat for a student going into Algebra One if they haven't had that. But everything else is open for all students to take, no matter what. If, if they're not necessarily doing well, if, if social studies is an area that they love and they want to be a part of, they can be a part of that. Um, our courses do provide grade-level instruction here, but they also focus on the skills that students need to be successful in AP courses. And so what they teach a lot of is, um, higher cognitive level questions, hi- higher cognitive level skills, activities that students do. Um, but it's also teaching them some of those strategies that they need to know in order to learn how to study. How do I study for this? What does that look like? What might a test look like at the AP level when I get to high school? And so, um, these students are provided that instruction by our teachers. At Huntsville High School, you have a five-year score summary. And we look at the total number of students that have AP tested, the total number of exams. The AP students with scores that have a three or higher, and then the percent of students, um, of AP students with a score of three or higher. Um, if you're not familiar with AP exams, a three or higher is what's considered passing for them. The highest that you can receive is a five. And the lowest is a one. And so our, um, wonderful counselors and the counseling team have worked diligently to encourage students to attempt the exam. Um, and as you can see, not just attempted it, but we're seeing an increase in the percent of total AP students with a three or higher, which is great. Um, we haven't seen that in a couple of years, and so we're, we're getting there. Um, but that's due to the increased rigor of instruction that's happening in the classroom to prepare those students for that AP exam. But in order to encourage our students to get into the AP classes and take the AP exam, we offer incentives, incentives such as cords for graduation. If a student takes three or more AP classes, passes the class, and of course, takes the exam. And just so you're aware, the cost of the AP exams is covered by the campus. So the student is not out for the cost of these, um, exams. We also have AP Scholar Award information. So for the AP Scholar, of course, this is where a student scores a three or higher on three or more AP exams. We had ten students that did that in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and that is an increase of eight students from the previous year. For the AP Scholar with honors, of course, that's a three or higher on four or more AP exams. They have to average a three-point-two-five across all of those exams. And we did have three students that met that. Unfortunately, this year, we did not have any AP Scholar with distinctions. And, um, previous year, we have had one or two, but we, unfortunately, we didn't have one for this past school year. When we're looking over the past five years, um, for AP enrollment versus AP exams that have been taken, um, just so you're aware, there is very targeted training that's required of these teachers that teach AP courses and pre-AP courses. They focus a lot on critical thinking skills, analysis skills at that higher level. Um, and we're focusing on ensuring that we're increasing student participation in those AP courses, if that's something that's of interest to that student. And we also want to work with our teachers to ensure that our students are scoring a three or higher on that AP exam when they take it. Those teachers continue to work and, um, use and help students understand there are specific strategies that our students in AP courses use. And so help, the, the teachers helping the students understand how to use those strategies and what it looks like to use those strategies on the AP exam and those instructional materials. You heard Mr. Campbell talk about instructional materials. The instructional materials for our Advanced Placement courses go through the College Board. And the College Board gives us a list of those instructional materials. So there, here's a list of some of the AP, the benefits of AP exams. I'm not going to read all these to you, but I'm going to highlight a couple. Um, we know that more than ninety percent of four-year US colleges and universities grant those credit, or at least placement, for qualifying AP exam scores. Um, and also, our AP students, they're more likely than their peers to complete college within that four years. Um, if you've known any, um, friends or parents or children, have children that took it long, longer than four years to complete college, that that can be very expensive now. And so our AP students are more likely to complete college in four years. Moving on to Dual Credits. Dual credit is another opportunity for our students to earn college credit at the high school level. Um, this allows students, um, a year-long to a access to college coursework. Some of the courses are taught by our teachers at the high school. Some of them are taught by professors at the collegiate level. But, um, they're, they are an avenue by which our students can earn that college credit. Our high school does pay for up to two dual-credit classes per student. And a lot of students and families agree to go the dual-credit route because there's not that one, um, exam at the end of the year. It is whether or not you pass the course throughout the entire, um, semester that, or that you take the course. And so ninety-nine percent of students who enroll in our dual-credit courses earn that college credit. We currently, um, have partnerships with Lone Star, UT OnRants, and San Houston State Universities. We currently, um, have partnerships with Lone Star, UT OnRants, and San Houston State Universities. I talked a little bit about this, about the difference in dual credit and advanced placement, but again, both, um, programs offer an opportunity for students to earn college credit. God, it's counseling. Our counselors work endless to meet with our students, to go over what's best for your family's in AP, is it dual credit? To make those best choices, not just for them or theirs, for themselves, but for their career, for financially, what's affordable to the parent at the time. Um, and students can be in both programs. There's not something that says you can only be in dual credit, you can only be in AP. They can be in both programs. Here's just an overall comparison of both advanced placement and dual credit. You can see the comparisons of the costs, the college credit, program admissions, the amount of time, and both the passing rates there. And here is an update of some of our high school events that have either already happened or coming up. We're proud to say that ACT School Day will be happening on October twenty-ninth. That is something new for this year. We also have our ASVAB testing coming up in November. The FAFSA is already open for students to begin applying, and we will have FAFSA night at the high school. And that's with San Houston State, the help from San Houston State on October twenty-ninth and November fifteenth. Information will be coming out from high school on times for that. And then there's also, for the upcoming next school year, an AP and dual credit parent meeting in February. Uh, that should say twenty twenty-six. And of course, then we always have senior night in May. Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Dr. Johnson?
I have one. Um, the slide that, um, talked about enrollment versus exams taken, and I just wanted to give a shout out to uh, the counselors that are sitting out there, and their colleagues that can't be with them, the teachers that teach the AP courses, and of course, the administration of the high school and our TNL team that helps support that, and our former principal sitting right over here. So, our new principal gets the benefit of this. The, the culture shift, that when you look at that chart coming out of COVID in twenty twenty-one, where basically half of the AP course enrollment even took the test. So, that meant half the kids were sent in the AP course for all the wrong reasons. There, there was no intention of taking the test and trying to get credit. It was for whatever other reason that they wanted to be in that particular course. To twenty twenty-five, I mean, the culture shift to get to ninety-three percent of the enrollment um, taking the test, and then thirty-two percent of those scoring at a three plus. So the numbers are, you know, in twenty twenty-one, eighty kids, or eighty, eighty test takers, uh, scoring a three plus to a hundred and forty-six in twenty twenty-five. So, I mean, that is a massive change in result, and it's a result of a culture shift, of why we take AP to begin with, and what, what the goal of the course is. So I just wanna give kudos to all the people that made that happen. That was a really impressive run from twenty-one to twenty-five to get those numbers to be that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next up, we will have a presentation on special education and also our dysentery report for twenty-four, twenty-five, Dr. Stephanie Dominique.
Uh, Mr. Holland, Board of Trustees, how does that work? Good evening. Um, I will give you a brief report on special education in five oh four. Um, I combined five oh four since dyslexia not falls under either one of those programs, um, since two thousand and twenty-three. Um, as you can see within the numbers, you'll see a growth within students receiving special education and a decrease in students receiving five oh four, and that's mainly due to that switch of all the students who are receiving dyslexia services falling under the special education umbrella if they are needing that specially-designed instruction. So, this was the first year that all of those students had to be under that special education umbrella. They gave us a two-year gap between moving students from five oh four under that special ed umbrella. So that's why the number of five oh four students has decreased. The number of special ed students is at seventeen twelve. When we do snapshot, it would go up approximately two hundred-plus more students for this year, the numbers of students receiving special education services. Our campuses right now, these are percentages of those students receiving special ed services. Scott Johnson is has the highest number of students receiving special ed services now. Um, and of course, Mance Park has the highest for the secondary campuses. High school right now has the highest number of students receiving five oh four services, and that's mainly due to a growth in those students, um, that are ADHD, that do not need those specially-designed instructions, but only accommodations or medical support um, for their, um, educational growth. As far as our enrollment goes, we're at a fifteen point four percent district-wide, which gives us right in line um, as far as number of students receiving state services at six point two, which is about, in average, if I look at the state number, we are in average with the state number as the number of students receiving state services across the state and nation, national-wide. We're in line with that growth, a little bit over the state number when we add in those students receiving dyslexia services. Our number of evaluations that our staff has diligently done dropped because, again, it all comes back to those students receiving dyslexia. They had to do a lot of evaluations last year when we moved all of those students from five oh four to special ed. They had to do all of those reevaluations and reevaluations for all of those students to qualify to receive special education services. So it wasn't automatic that they received special ed services. They actually had to read the eligibility criteria with us. Our programs, we have, um, combined, um, all across. We have the four-year-olds at Scott Johnson and our three-year-olds at Stewart. All campuses have inclusion, resource, life skills. Three of our campuses have our behavior support, um, classes. Right now, I do not have it listed up here, but we also offer a eighteen-plus program that is a post-secondary program that is offered for those students at the high school who have completed all of their coursework and state assessments, but are still working on life skills, independent living, or work ability skills in order for them to complete their IEP. So they get to stay in school up until age twenty-two and still work within the community. Or if they cannot go into the community, we do community-based workplace skills within the classroom for those students. Our staffing, uh, when I look at staffing from last year compared to this year, even though our numbers increased in the amount of students receiving special ed services, the staffing kind of decreased. Um, I have been talking diligently with Dr. Dixon, um, helping, um, with that process of trying to, of our, making sure we have the correct amount of staff to serve our students, um, so they could be successful, um, within those classrooms and that the teachers that we currently have and staff we currently have are not overwhelmed, um, while they are trying to service our students. We are fully staffed on the five oh four side as far as campus staff goes, um, and those teachers that are supporting those students on the five oh four side, um, of the program. Our celebrations, we are working with IT right now diligently. They are helping us develop an assessment management system that will be automated instead of us right now using a Google Sheet, which all of our assessments staff have to look at, which get kind of cumbersome when you look at that Google Sheet. But now, it would be an automated system that is speaking into all of the information from Skywork, so we don't have to worry about miss, spelling the student's name, and it will be automated, automated for all of us to be able to look at and stay in compliance with all assessments across the board. So if a student moves and comes back, we automatically have that, um, information in the system. So I'm grateful to Mr. Samuel and his team, who when I asked for it, they said, let us see what we could do, and they are diligently working um, to give us that, um, that system. I told them what I wanted, and they so far have granted us that request, so I'm grateful for them for that. Um, Special Olympics, we are expanding that program, uh, with Coach Elliot, Coach Elliott. Um, they had a bocce ball. They've added, I thought when he said, I thought he said boxing. I don't know why I got excited to see Special Olympics and boxing. He was like, hold on, what is bocce ball? They had their, uh, tournament on the twenty-eighth, and we had two, uh, winners, um, a gold medalist and a bronze medalist um, in their bocce ball tournament. Um, and they are now practicing bowling, and they are using the lanes at San Houston, um, to start practicing bowling as we expand that program. Um, we are continuing to collaborate also with San Houston with adaptive PE. Um, once a week, those, um, students from the various campuses, different days of the week, go to San Houston and work with those um, students that are training to be adaptive PE teachers, and so they get an opportunity to go work hand-in-hand with those um, students over there. The students seem excited. The teachers go with them on the bus, so they seem excited and collaborating with those students. And then they first, hands-on experience working with our students. Um, our social learning lab, uh, right now, it's currently at two campuses, at San Houston, um, and Stewart. We are working, um, with, um, Ms. Barnes to extend it, expand it to Scott Johnson and hopefully, um, also to HES eventually. That works with both general education and special education students on those tier-one and tier-two supports, um, trying to help those students that maybe just some occasional pull-out time in social, emotional learning while they're working on it. Instead of putting them directly into special ed, they may, just may need some actual support and training in those areas. Our ongoing, um, and new goals that we have, uh, again, recruiting and retaining, um, our current staff right now, as far as special ed admin, we are a hundred percent. Um, uh, oh, no vacancies a hundred percent in admin. Last time I checked, I think we had eight teacher vacancies and only one IA vacancy. Um, working, um, trying, again, trying to think outside of the box on how we can recruit and retain staff within those, um, areas, which, especially right now across the state, or actually across the nation. When I talk to the people, it's a hard, painful, so have to think outside the box in order to get staff to come in and stay in, um, once they get here. Um, compliance with timelines, um, and evaluations, and ARDS, that is a big one, um, for us to try to stay within compliance across the board with all of those timelines. Um, training, providing high-quality ongoing professional development. October fourteenth, during the last PD, all of our special education teachers and IAs was with, uh, us over at the SOC, and the teachers are at standard-based IEP training, um, learning how to write all those IEPs, or they are in compliance and aligned with what TEA would look for whenever they're coming to review all of our data. So they all receive that, and they will continue to get ongoing coaching, um, from the service center that provided that training. So they will have opportunity to get ongoing coaching as they transform their model of how they've been writing their IEPs. Uh, we wanna provide, start providing parents, um, five oh four information, so they'll know that even though they don't get those modifications in college, but they can get those accommodations whenever those students go to college. Letting the parents know what those benefits are for those students and making sure that they have updated, um, evaluations, so they can provide that information when they go to disability services if they plan to go to, um, college. Ninety-eight percent on the bottom when I came in, that was the goal that I set for myself. And I also challenged all of the staff to have ninety-eight percent. When I went and talked to all of the staff at the campuses, um, as well, ninety-eight percent in whatever your role is, whatever that looks like for you, um, try to make it at ninety-eight percent. I gave leeway for that two percent for those things that are out of our control. So we can hit that ninety-eight percent, and everybody, whatever your role is, whether you're an IA or evaluator, ninety-eight percent, that's the goal. No one booked me. They said, okay, we have a poll piece hanging up at the SOC that shows what everybody was going to do within their role to meet that ninety-eight percent for the year. Um, we didn't know. So, so far, we are doing great. All of our ARDS and evaluations, right now, we've only had one that had been out of compliance, and that was a part of that two percent that was out of our control. Need to know, um, we will undergo a Cisco review, which is a comprehensive, um, desk review audit, um, that will, TEA will come in to review us. That window for us to be reviewed is January through March, when they will be here reviewing everything. They will follow the seven areas that's up there, evaluation, IEP implementation, properly constituted ARD committees, the IEP content, development, transition, and state assessment. Those are the seven areas that they will focus on, but they can look at other areas if they choose to during that window. In preparation for that, I am going to, I'm going to do a mock Cisco review myself. I'm going to use the same materials that TEA used. Since I was a part of the steering committee to help develop the new, uh, Cisco review model, I am using what I already had privileged to. And I'm gonna do a mock Cisco review, so I could already kind of have, uh, eye of what they may find when they come in. Already developed a proposed cap. So if they find it, if we have a cap, something we leave in a capital registration plan. If it's something that we're gonna have to do, I'm planning to already have a proposed one already done. They have, we'll have a year if they find something, and we have a year to give them the cap to develop it. If I already have one proposed, the sooner I give it to them, the sooner they can leave the house. So that is my plan to do a mock Cisco review, just like they was doing it. So hopefully, whatever I find, they'll find, and we can get them out of the house. With that said, any questions?
Ms. Walter.
Everybody knows, everybody knows. Um, first of all, I'm excited to have you here. Um, thank you for carrying on the legacy of the, the last few special ed directors and, and building. I love that we're increasing Special Olympics, um, I wish our kabachi competition, um, the two athletes that you have had a great time. They worked really hard. Coach Elliott worked well with them. And we're at the bowling alley now, so, um, it's working out very well. But my favorite part is the social learning lab, because I'm a huge proponent of inclusion, and it all stems back to an amazing kindergarten teacher that we had back in the day. Um, and so, please continue to expand that. Um, inclusion is amazing for the sped students, but it's even more amazing for the typical students. And so, I'm extremely passionate if there's anything I can do to help you with that, um, or just, um, convey to the teachers, I understand the challenges, but the rewards are, um, just immeasurable. So, thank you, and, um, you guys are gonna have maybe a couple of mistakes on, on the audit and something to improve on, but your staff worked really, really hard. So, and we had our last ARD. I'm so excited.
Any other comments? Dr. Dominique, if you could help, uh, me with Dr. Dixon, get a pass to go over there to San Houston. When y'all have the kids go over there, we can have a recruiting trip, get some teachers from them, so, um, we're in a race to get some recruiting members up, so, but, uh, it sounds like that's a great opportunity, especially since we're on campus and connecting with those future student, or future educators. If we can get them over here, so maybe we can, I don't know, if there are any kind of, if they fitted with our incentivized plan or anything of that nature, I don't know what we need to check into, but, yeah. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, the last report is gonna be by me, and it is on our board members continuing education. Even we have to take classes and courses, and, uh, Tracy, you mentioned one that you and JT took earlier this week, and thank you for that update, but let me, it's a little bit of an expanded, uh, report than it usually is. Um, but under state Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As board president, I'm required to announce the name of each member who has completed their training and has exceeded their training and/or if they're deficient. I'm glad to report there is nobody deficient on our board, and all of us have exceeded our training. Uh, the training areas that, uh, each board member must do throughout the year. Two of them are if you're a new board member, so Ms. Burris, have local district orientation and orientation of the Texas Education Code. I know that one was fun. Um, then we all have to go through post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code. We do team building, additional continuing education, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children, and school safety. Uh, I also must read off the amount of hours that we have, uh, obtained through this, uh, cycle. And again, all of us have exceeded. Ms. Burris has ten point seven. And again, all of us have exceeded. Ms. Burris has 10.75 hours. Ms. Switzer, 15. Mr. Langley, 18.75 hours. Mr. Hendrix, 13 hours. Mr. Holland, 17.75 hours. Ms. Owens, 17.75 hours. And Ms. Stout, 18.75 hours. So Ms. Stout and Mr. Langley have tied for the lead this time, so.
She can have it.
Mr. Langley, I, I, I think that you're just going to need to join us for all the other continuing education that we go through. It's not going to be the same without you, so. But that is our report on our continuing education. Thank you, members, for being diligent to do that. Board members, our next meeting notices, we do have a special call board meeting on October 28th. That is a Tuesday. That is for some items that have some timeliness to getting them approved. Then our next scheduled regular board meeting is going to be on November 20th. And then I think that's all. We don't have any other things before our next one. I know we have our Christmas parade coming up December 5th.
You, you will have a special call meeting to canvass the election, but that hasn't been scheduled yet. So between the special call in October and the regular November, there will be a short special call. We just haven't had the date scheduled yet.
Still working on some scheduling things there. So that is it for the main part of our meeting. We will be going into closed session, though there will be nothing to report. If some of you want to stay around to the very end, you're more than welcome. Wade is shaking his head no. Again, we do not have anything to report. So we will adjourn into closed session at 8:52. Thank you very much.